All right, so we have, I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to General Laws 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If we were to hold this in an open meeting have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, which I still declare, relating to local 239 Halifax Association of Police Patrol Officers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes. We'll be doing the minutes as well, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And we'll approve the minutes or adjust the minutes.
Yep.
Okay, we'll be back. Join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. We start every meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first appointment is with Community Land and Water Coalition, Kathryn Harrelson. So come on, is there a microphone somewhere for her to be recorded?
No, it should, the sound should pick up through the microphones in the room though.
Okay, all right. So you can stand, sit, whatever you're comfortable with.
Thank you very much. My name is Kathryn Harrelson. I am with Community Land and Water Coalition. We're very happy to be here tonight, and we'd like to present to you our information on sand mining, defending people and the environment. We are a grassroots network of individuals and volunteers. Our mission is to protect, preserve, and steward the land and water resources of southeastern Massachusetts. We are losing them the best. The United Nations has identified sand mining as a global environmental crisis. Annually, between 40 and 50 billion metric tons of sand are extracted from the earth every single year. In fact, sand is the number one solid material extracted from the earth every year and the second most extracted material from the earth after water. The United Nations Environmental Program has identified sand mining as a topic of interest when it comes to global sustainability. They have issued a report called Sand and Sustainability: Ten Strategic Recommendations to Refer to Crisis, and this is making headlines across the world. In fact, the United Nations has proposed a Global Sand Observatory Institute, which would be a knowledge hub across the world to collect data on sand mining, where it's occurring, how often it's occurring, how much is occurring, and the motivations and financial resources behind it. According to the U.N., sand resource governance is one of the greatest sustainability challenges of the 21st century. Sand mining is happening here, right in our backyards in southeastern Massachusetts. A 10-year investigation by Community Land and Water Coalition has identified 110 sand and gravel mining sites in southeastern Mass. Over 89 million cubic yards of sand have been removed, relocated, or sold from our aquifer. Over 2,000 acres of land has been deforested and strip mined for the purposes of sand mining. Sand has been removed from the Plymouth Harbor sole source aquifer just south of the town's borders. During this process, indigenous history is being lost. Drinking water is being put at risk. There are many environmental consequences to sand mining. Sand mining takes away the land, it levels hills, it removes forests, it removes topsoil, and it removes entire ecosystems. Sand mining leaves behind a desert. Nothing much can grow again in a human lifetime, according to Mary Booth, Ph.D. Sand mining destroys Native American culture. It eliminates natural filtration for drinking water. It removes the protection for surface and groundwater against pollution. It destroys our biodiversity, including the globally rare southeastern Massachusetts pine barrens, home to 220 state-listed species. There are real economic impacts to the sand mining, as many of these permits are handed out, which, under agricultural permits, evading real estate taxes, leaving towns to sacrifice zones to this extraction. There are climate change impacts from sand mining as well. There are emissions from the deforestation, from the soil removal. The sand mining overall reduces our climate resilience in a time of a climate crisis, and it increases our flooding risks. There are health and safety consequences to the sand mining. There's emissions of carcinogenic silica sand dust as the dust becomes airborne during almost any windstorm. There's noise and vibration affecting our neighborhoods, and also dangerous truck traffic is associated with sand mining as well. As I said, the sand extraction is often committed, conducted under local permits. There are no environmental impact studies. There are no archaeological assessments. There's no control on air pollution. There's no protection from the residents from excessive noise and vibration of the trucks or the equipment. There are very little safety precautions taken for truck traffic, and very often, there's no consideration of climate change impacts. We've identified one site in Halifax which you're very well aware of, where sand mining is occurring. This is 250 Lingan Street in Halifax. Over 167,000 cubic yards of earth removal has occurred or been permitted at this site. Before the sand mining occurred, this site was forested on the banks of Mon Ponse Pond. After the sand mining occurred, this site now looks like a desert. As you're very well aware, Mon Ponse Pond is a natural resource. It's home to the archeological significant Whaleback Esker in the glacial hill. 15 acres have been impacted in recent years, and 67 acres are threatened by sand mining permits at this site. As you're very well aware, West Mon Ponse Pond is a Class A public water supply and an outstanding resource water. The sand mining is also occurring in a Division II wellhead protection area, putting the town's drinking water resources at risk. We ask you to connect the dots. Global demand for sand is increasing. We have abundant source of this sand in our backyard. Permits are being handed out left and right across towns all over southeastern Mass. Where's the sand coming from? Connect the dots. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we have, I'm sorry.
Anybody from the board with any questions first before we open it up to the...
Well, I have a couple. I don't know if you have more to present, or should I hold off, or...
We do have more. We do have a few more to present if we have time.
Well, yeah, whatever she wants to tell us, go ahead and tell us.
Okay, great, thank you. Could we call Erin?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Keenan. I'm also with the Community Land and Water Coalition, and we're here today to actually deliver our petition with over 1,500 signatures from people all over southeastern Massachusetts and across the United States who are trying to speak up and say that we really need to be limiting the earth removal activities across the region, and that we urge the boards to take a closer look at this. As Kathryn talked about, this is a global issue, but it's happening rapidly right here in our home, and this is something that every board across southeastern Massachusetts has to be on board with because we're not going to solve it alone, and if it's happening in one town, it's affecting all of our drinking water supply. So, you know, I'll keep it short, but this is the petition that also has information on it, and I just really urge the Halifax Board again to take this seriously and hopefully put a moratorium, moratorium on earth removal.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to get up and speak for a few minutes. My name is Meg Sheehan. I'm an attorney. I grew up in Plymouth. I'm one of the co-founders of Community Land and Water Coalition, but I have like 40-year history of working on conservation in the region. Maybe the last time was in the Halifax Town Hall was in the 1990s when we were working on protecting the Strider Preserve on the Winnatack exit river. So I worked very hard on trying to save land and protect land and our water in southeastern Mass, and that's why I founded, co-founded this organization to try to educate the public and let people know how they can get involved in some of the local land use decisions that are happening in our local town halls with earth removal, with planning boards and zoning boards. So thank you so much for having us. We know that Halifax has taken a stand in connection with the Morse Brothers Project, and we really appreciate that. We did send that damage to the environment letter out in the fall before you had taken your action to issue the season desist to Morse Brothers, and we have let Morse Brothers and Boy the Anula know that we're not going to stand for any more earth removal in Halifax or really anywhere else. So thank you for taking action, and I also wanted to let you know that your actions in addressing Morse Project was the subject of a Wall Street Journal article that came out on Wednesday of this past week, and it was really significant to have Halifax as Board of Selectmen mentioned in this story, and also to have the town of Kingston mention the Board of Selectmen there recently rejected a large earth removal project on Indian Pond, and the Board of Water Commissioners had a peer review study that they commissioned that said this project would harm our drinking water supply, and the Board of Selectmen had their own peer review. Hydrologists say the same thing. So communities are really coming together around this and learning what's happening and why we should take a closer look at some of these projects. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
What else? That's it? Steve, go ahead.
Steve Goodman, 24th Ave, live in town. I was on the Conservation Commission for a while. I've brought some of these, some of these specific items to your attention in the past. Some of you were, well, actually, at first, I don't think any of you were board members at the time. Maybe you were.
I think I was.
When I first moved to town, it was a project proposed, a permit that didn't get approved, thank goodness, of 1.5 million cubic, or cubic yards of earth to move. To put that into perspective, for those that don't know, that would be if you took Foxborough Stadium and filled it 800 feet deep. That's how much earth they intended to remove at that point, and that was only a few years ago. So that's after the 2012 project, which, if anyone who's taken a walk back there, you know they pierced the water table. That backlog doesn't produce any cranberries at all. It's wet year-round. I can ice skate on it in the winter. So they've already damaged that. You know, it's, the biodiversity in that area is remarkable compared to the rest of this area of the state, and it's something I really feel like we need to protect. And I know that it's gone pretty far now. I urge you guys to do everything you can to not have any more earth removed. The bog, if you don't know where I'm talking about, because some of you haven't heard me talk, way in the back corner, it's actually this one, and the, now that is, if you look most of the time of the year, it's, looks like it's part of the pond. It's mostly water. They tried to add an additional bog in 2012 when they removed a lot of that sand. In my estimation, they moved double what you guys permitted them for. I know it wasn't any of you, but that's what we've been dealing with. They've been permitted to move, I don't even know how much, hundreds, thousands, but I, in my estimation, they moved more than double that. I mean, where the Whaleback Esker is, it's geologically significant. That sand was put there 15,000 years ago when the glaciers receded. And anybody who knows anything about water, even if you're a survivalist, the number one element of your filtration is sand, and we don't have any anymore. I stood before you guys three years ago and said, if you allow them to take any more sand, we're going to need filtration on our wells, which we never needed before, and our water supply is going to be ruined, and it is. I never needed a whole house filter in my house. I do now. And even with a whole house filter and a filter in my water pitcher, I still change my monthly, my monthly filter, I mean, my three-month filter every month. It's filled with debris because there's no more natural filter, and you can't, there's nothing you can do about that at this point. But I urge you to just not let it happen anymore. I mean, there are grants. Some cranberry bogs are selling land back and letting go back to wetlands because, I mean, I live in the neighborhood. I have cameras set up in the neighborhood. I think we saw eight cranberry trucks come out of there this year. This year. But over 100 sand trucks. So they're not a farm. They're not doing cranberry anymore. They do the absolute bare minimum so that they can enjoy the agricultural protections and the agricultural tax laws. I think it really needs to be investigated. It really needs to stop before that lake is just useless. I mean, I don't care about property values. I'm not ever moving. I'm not ever selling my house, but I'd like to be able to enjoy that lake and the biodiversity that's there. Just in the four years since I've been in town, I've noticed a drop in, in a lot of the different wildlife in the area, the different birds, because there's no longer enough fish for them to eat. So the predatory birds have gone elsewhere. I think with the proper, proper things in place and maybe some punitive damages to them, maybe we can get them, convince them to turn it back to wetlands, and we can get that back. Thank you guys for listening.
Can I have one question?
Sure.
Isn't there a rare white land cedar swamp, a forest something?
There is, and it's directly, I don't know if it's on that map. It's a, it is extremely rare. White cedar swamp, it's between, it's between one of their pump houses and their back bogs. That's a tough map to really, Jeremy might know a little bit about it.
It's Autobahn property.
What's that?
It's just to the north.
Yeah.
Of the Esker and then the Autobahn property.
Yeah, it's just, so directly abiding them, I don't know if you know that, and to the butter who was never notified of any of the projects is the Autobahn Society owns the property that directly abuts them on the north, and then pass that is the Burridge, which is a wildlife preserve. But neither of them were ever notified of any projects ever, to this day. But they're direct abutters. And I contacted them when I first moved to town and heard about that project, and they said that the initial project that you guys didn't approve, they knew nothing about.
It's important since that's fish and wildlife, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're talking about the pond, the one they want, the pond they wanted to dig, that permit they put in?
Well, they put in the permit, and part of that permit was to remove 1.5 million cubic acres.
Okay, so that was never acted on?
No, they never acted on, they withdrew it before you guys, when you guys were going to have the meeting to approve it or not approve it. Only the abutters on 13th Ave, which I guess technically they obeyed the law, except for they didn't notify the Autobahn Society and the Burridge.
Okay.
As far as residents in Halifax, they did obey the law technically, because the project was taking place at the far end of their dirt road, so they only notified the people who were within 300 feet of the project, not 300 feet of their property line, which is our entire neighborhood if you go from the property line. But, you know, I just think accountability's big.
Any more presentation parts? Anybody from the board have any questions? Tom?
Just a small one. You've shown a map where this is happening all across Massachusetts. How were your efforts at the state level? I know you're doing grassroots stuff at the town municipal level, but have you guys had any luck at all with going to the state with your concerns?
We have been advocating with MASTEP, with U.S. EPA. We delivered the petition this summer to the governor, and they are saying that they don't see any environmental violations. That's why it's such a local land use issue. They're looking at it as a local land use issue. You're issuing the permits, like you guys have to deal with it in the towns. That is not a very satisfactory answer for us, so we're still advocating at the state level, and we are looking into filing legislation that would strengthen the ability of towns to address some of this, which 75% of it is cranberry companies using the agricultural exemption. So we need to tighten up some of those loopholes in the state law, and that includes all the agricultural tax, Chapter 61, definitions of what is agriculture, because it has to be primarily used to grow crops, and we have sites that are sand mining for 15 years and not growing anything and generating, you know, tens of millions of dollars a year, and sand revenue and cranberries, as everyone knows, is break even. I just had somebody in Plymouth tell me that the PA Landers proposed project in Cedarville that's going to take out the last hill in Cedarville, 2 million cubic yards, that compared to the sand revenue, it will take 160 years to make any money off the cranberry bogs. It's like four or five acres that he put in for cranberries. So, yeah, that's a big issue, and we've talked to Senator Markey about it, the federal delegation, and we will continue to pursue state-level efforts.
And what, sorry, what is, what is the final success for you guys? What, how do you, how do you, what's the end game here? What are you guys hoping to accomplish as a, as a final game?
To stop all earth removal.
All earth removal whatsoever?
Well, that is not necessary and incidental to, you know, putting a foundation in, a cellar. You know, the bylaws are very clear about that. It has to be necessary and incidental to use your property. Nobody has the right to level a mountain and say that it's agriculture, and the towns, in many cases, are not properly applying the bylaws, and a lot of people are very concerned about that. And so that's the end game, proper enforcement of the law, protection of the groundwater, no more of this industrial-scale sand mining that's pretending to be agriculture or pretending to be a subdivision project like the SLT site on Route 44 and Spring Street in Plimpton. So preserving what's left of our hills.
I think what's key here is that we have old growth trees and old trees that are being cut down. That helps filter water, and then they take out the entire ecosystem. All the soil has microorganisms support all this filtration, and, you know, now we have nothing filtered, filtering our seven towns drinking water. So basically, that's the goal, is to try to protect our water. Water is a key issue. There's PFAS everywhere, and it's just going to get worse, and there's no real help from the governor. I spoke to the governor myself about it, and she said it's a huge problem, and they're waiting for money from the government, from the federal government, to help mitigate this issue. I know that Middleborough's wells are polluted, the PFAS, and they're not going to be building their water filtration plant until the summer of 2025. So if you have a newborn baby that you want to bathe, you're going to be bathing that baby in PFAS water. That's the reality of the situation, and that is our big concern, is to try to help with our water supply.
Just one last point for me. There's, there's a couple areas I think you guys may be focused on. I've tried to talk to the Bylaw Review Committee. The bylaws, some of our bylaws are very vague and written so very long ago.
Exactly.
So, one of them is, it says that the removal of earth or the moving of earth can be conducted for on-farm operations. Well, 240 years ago, when that law was written at the beginning of this town, being incorporated, on-farm meant, you know, Joe's Farm. He's going to move this stuff over here so he can put a barn, and he's going to save that sort of, well, the cranberry bros have taken that to mean any of their properties. And that was a defense that I had a conversation with Mr. Moklin, because I said, well, to be honest with you, I followed five of your trucks down to your other bog in Middleborough, and he said, yeah, that's on-farm. I moved that sand from, that's on my farm, so I don't need an earth removal permit. So that's his interpretation, is on-farm means any of his properties. My interpretation is your farm in town. You know, and what is, what is a farming operation? That's, that's pretty vague as well. So tightening those things up.
So you see some of the issues that we had to deal with.
Yeah, tightening those things up, right. It's not, it's not a single issue. Tightening some of those things up would help you be a stronger voice to enforce and less likely be opened up to litigation from a property owner.
Okay. We don't have any projects in front of us now, nor do I anticipate any right now, but, so we don't have anything particular to deal with. We do have some litigation going on with Morse Brothers over the past stuff that we can't really get involved with now. We're not going to talk about that because that's in the court, and the judge is making decisions on some of these issues, so. But that's where we are now.
No, 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 I got great questions answered.
So, we appreciate the information. I'm sure Steve and Jeremy will tell you the next time we get an application and you come back and tell us the same thing again. I don't know. So, but, you know, we're, as a board, I can speak for myself, and I think my associates agree that we try to take as much information as we can and then do the best we can to make a decision on whatever we have to make a decision on. Right now, we don't have to make any decisions, but, but we do appreciate the information.
I really appreciate that your stand on this because I had a dear friend, and he was a Native American, and that Whaleback was a very special place, and, you know, he would be very, very upset to know that his cultural history has been destroyed.
You talk about Mr. Gardner, right?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I knew Mr. Gardner a while. The chief.
Yes, who swam in that pond every day he could. So, yeah, he used to come to my house a lot to play his banjo and tell jokes. So I appreciate your stand on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out anytime, you know, if you have any questions.
Yeah, you guys know where to find them.
Yeah, I know where to find them.
You know where to find us.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Tameo, I say that right? Yeah, come on up, come on up front there, and...
For any questions.
Yeah, you don't have to stand. You're fine if you want to sit back there, whatever's comfortable.
Right there's fine. Yeah, right there's fine.
So I read your, I think we're both with your application. It's been around a long time, and do you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Council on Aging?
Yes, I moved here from Rhode Island about seven years ago, and my daughter has lived in Pembroke, and she wanted me near her, so, sorry. I went into the park, and I joined committees there because I like to help people wherever I can and wherever they need it. And I went to the COA, and they have a lot of programs which are good, and I'm interested in learning that so I can help others that don't go here seeing that there aren't so many people there.
Okay. John?
No, I read your application. I see you have experience with fundraisers and community events, so I appreciate you trying to get your roots here into Halifax. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think a long history of helping people, and I think anyone who wants to help here is welcome by us, so.
Thank you.
I applaud you.
Jean, are you here as a representative? Are you the Council on Aging president?
I am on the Council on Aging, yes.
Oh, okay, so the Council on Aging approves.
Yes, we did. She came to our meeting last time, fit right in. We voted yes. We voted yes. We levered in the door.
That's fantastic. You know, it's always great to have, I'll call you...
I'm close to my desk, right?
I'll tell you, I'll, I'll give you a compliment. We'll call you a new person. So you're new to, new to town, so that's wonderful, and it's great that you're getting involved. It's a great town, and Council on Aging does a lot. It's very active in this town, and with any luck, we'll have a new building for you in about a year, so all good.
Yeah, we're working over there.
Yeah?
We're working on it.
Yeah, we're working on it.
It's nice. From the time I've been here for the years, I've been here, it's so nice.
It's a great town.
People are very friendly.
Oh, that building? I've lived in town for, it'll be 40 years in May, and that's been a discussion every year. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Patricia Tameo as...
Tameo.
Tameo, I'm sorry, as a, to the Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations and thank you.
Pleasure.
All right, now we can go back to our more mundane business. So let's do the warrants and commitments.
I move to approve, affirm approval of the following warrant and commitments. Vendor warrant number 47, $47,804.70. Ambulance commitments, 11-11-24 through 11-17-2024, for $89,213.57.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 48 for $468,681.92. Vendor warrant number 49 for $118,210.46. Withholding warrant number 50 for $165,892.9. Ambulance commitment from 10-21-24 through 10-27-2024 for $63,057.99. Mobile home park fee number 12 for $5,160.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. While we're on this, I will move the ambulance abatements from September 24th, September 2024, rather, 135-725-41.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. National Grid?
Yes, so you may recall, you previously had approved the agreement to install the Level 3 chargers over at the playground parking lot, and at that point, I had mentioned there may be a time when National Grid comes back and needs to install additional pole or some conduit there. So you see, there's the pad over there that has kind of all like the wires sticking out. So National Grid needs to interconnect. In order to interconnect, they need to run conduit from the pole over there underground to the, to that pad. Because it's our property, they do need the agreement here, the easement agreement.
Running under the parking lot?
Nope, just from, there's a pole right there on the sidewalk.
Oh.
And it's going to go underneath the grass, right to that concrete pad. It's probably 20 feet, maybe, give or take.
Yep.
So that's, that's, once they, once you guys approve this, if you approve this, then they're able to go over and install that interconnect. So that's, that's, once they, once you guys approve this, if you approve this, then they're able to go over, install that, interconnect those, and those will be fully operational.
Okay, uh, do you have a paperwork?
Yes, so you can see the agreement here, um, with National Grid. And this is just a map that'll be attached and it shows the conduit there.
Uh, are we gonna end up signing on that?
Yes, you'll have to sign it on the second page and then Pam will, we'll need Pam to authorize it.
Okay, all right. Um, any discussion from the board?
So on this easement, Cody, are we essentially giving them the property?
No, no, it's our property. No, no, we're not, no. So if we were giving property, that's a town meeting thing.
Gotcha, yeah.
Uh, we can't, we can't grant property. What we're doing is, is we're granting them the ability to utilize it for the specific purpose.
Okay.
So it's not a general easement. We're not saying you can use it for whatever you want. We're not giving the property away.
It's the specific...
It's saying, in, in, in the agreement, you can see it's specific for an underground, I think it says underground utility system.
Underground system.
And also the, the map gets attached and recorded with it. So it's within the scope of that map, which you can see existing poles and then just running that conduit to the pad. That's, that the, um...
So essentially, the, uh, equipment that they're, first of all, they're digging at it, which they have to ask our permission to do. But secondly, they're also putting a, a permanent structure on town property.
On property.
And so, um, it, it's a legal thing. It'll be, it, it, this will be deeded. It'll end up in the, uh, in the, uh, registry of deeds. They, they have the right to put this piece of property underneath what our property, that's all.
That makes me feel a lot better. Got it.
We can make an easement for anything, but that's what this is.
Gotcha.
So like, we have easements in, in, um, private property. We may have drainage easements, um, and then we, there's other, many other, um, utility easements.
There's a lot of utility easements all along the side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
For telecom pole, for example, that's, that's on town property. But we have to issue an easement so that they can put it there.
They can do it.
Otherwise, we'd have to, we could tell them to take it away.
Correct.
All right, uh, so, uh, unless there's any other discussion, I will, uh, move that we approve the grant of easement for Massachusetts Electric Company?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, I'll ask you guys for your John Hancock. All right, uh, farmland of local importance?
Yes, this is another follow-up, uh, from our previous project. The board had approved authorizing, um, the farmland of local importance study for the town. So we had, um, the USDA Department of Natural Resource Conservation Service, uh, did this study after you guys had approved it. They have come down and defined, uh, several parcels that could be, could be identified as farmland of local importance. They look at, um, aerial imagery, soil type, so on and so forth. So in your packet was the list. Um, so now there are requests that you approve this. And then in the late winter, early spring, they'll provide us with a map of all of these. Um, and again, this can help with, um, potential landowners to get some USDA grants, uh, can help with financing in some cases. It's, it's a, it's a good thing for the, um, for the community. Particularly if you hear there's a big, um, you know, residents wanna keep Halifax how it is and keep it, you know, keep the farmland. So this is just aids the community to do that.
Does it include cranberry bogs, does it?
Um, there are some that it does, yes. There are, there are some, uh, parcels that it...
At least we'll know there are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, can I do what the sign?
Yes, so we'll need all three of your signatures to have your approvals.
So, uh, again, I will, let me just call here, uh, far, uh, this is the...
Farmland of local importance.
Farmland of local importance. Okay, so I will move that we, uh, approve the report on the farmland of local importance for Halifax.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Today is the, today's the third?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Memorandum of Agreement on the Police, Police Department?
Yes, so this is a proposed memorandum of agreement with the Patrol Officers, um, Union. This is to address the compensation for the comfort dog handling, which you, um, we've discussed previously in executive session.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Local Two Thirty-Nine Halifax Association of Police Officers Patrol Officers Agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, two, there's two copies? Gotcha. One for each side. Okay, uh, recognition of Teamsters Local Twenty-Five?
Yes, so there has been a, um, effort to unionize several of the positions in town that are not currently union. Uh, they're non-union positions. We were approached, um, by the Teamsters Local Twenty-Five regarding this. Um, with this, there is a recognition agreement recognizing the unions. There's two proposed bargaining units. One, um, consists of all of the administrative staff and the assistant department heads, we call them. So like your assistant town clerk, your assistant treasurer, your assistant collector, assistant town accountant, those types of positions. Um, and then the other bargaining unit would be our library employees, except for the library director, um, is not included in this. So the, what, what I'm looking for tonight is for the board to, um, once we meet the, so I attached a copy of the recognition agreement in your packet. Uh, basically lays out that we have a twenty-day posting requirement. We've started that, we posted that, uh, two weeks ago, I think it was. So next week, we'll be at the twenty-date mark. Um, and once we've fulfilled all of our obligations under that and the union has fulfilled theirs and they provide us proof, um, my, my ask tonight would be that you approve it and allow me to sign off on it, rather than us having to wait for another meeting. And we, so we can just keep the process moving forward.
Okay, any discussion from the board? Uh, so I'll make a motion as suggested by the town administrator to, uh, approve the voluntary recognition and to authorize, uh, Mr. Hadad to sign on our behalf.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, um, all that's left is old business.
Yes, so MBTA zoning, not a ton of updates there. Um, we do have the special town meeting coming up on the sixteenth, at six-thirty. Uh, we also published a full webpage with all the information regarding the MBTA zoning. So I encourage the community to utilize that resource. Um, not only is all of the prior information on there, such as the recordings from the meeting that we held, uh, the presentation, there is memorandum on potential grant impact. We really tried to take all of the feedback we've gotten from the community and try to provide the information. We also put together an FAQs, frequently asked questions, with I think eight or so questions that we've gotten with answers on there. Um, we'll be publishing that on our social media, on the homepage of our website, but there is a whole page dedicated to that now. Um, it has the zoning map on it. It has the actual bylaw being proposed, so everything's on there. Um, speaking of that, warrants should be arriving any day now in mailboxes?
Mine was...
Oh, did you get it? Okay, yeah, so people should start getting them. Um, we put everything, as much information in there as we could. But again, if, if people want additional information, I, I recommend going to that MBTA zoning page on our website. Um, and then as far as just general, I'm sorry.
Just a quick, just a quick thing. Is there any benefit for a six-thirty start, just for the edification of the, the public? Is there any benefit to showing up at six?
Yes, that was gonna be my next...
So the meeting starts at six-thirty or is close to? If everyone shows up at six-thirty, we're not starting till seven, seven-fifty?
So...
What time should people show up?
Show up at five forty-five, six o'clock.
I think the night before. Like, get the, get the, get the tent set.
You know, we'll, we will, we'll try to...
Reserve seats.
We'll try to hold the meeting, um, as long as we can, but we, we try to, as soon as we have quorum at six-thirty, we're gonna try to get started.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, get in, get in, get in early, check in.
So be there, be there at six, five forty-five, six is appropriate, if, 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 if possible.
The doors will be open.
We'll, we'll, we'll be, the town will be ready at five forty-five, six.
Yes.
To let you in.
Yep, to start checking in, yep, start checking in. Yeah, we encourage, we encourage everyone to get there early.
Can't start until six.
Can't start until six-thirty in quorum. But we can, we can start checking people in and getting people in the doors, have seat.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I'd encourage people to get there early.
Yes.
Uh, if possible. And stay, and stay as well.
If there's a quorum, we should, although we always are kind of courteous about the people in line, but if there's a quorum at six-thirty, we should open up.
Yeah.
But it'd be better if they showed up at six.
We've held, I think, in years past, haven't we?
Uh, well, usually it's hard to get a quorum, although I don't think this is gonna be a problem.
I think we'll be okay.
But, yeah, I mean, like the last Springtown meeting, people showed up at the time we're supposed to start to get in line.
And that's difficult.
They realize...
And that's difficult, so.
Yeah.
If we're ready, if the time is ready at five forty-five, six, that would be helpful to push things along.
The doors will be open.
We'll be ready, so if you folks wanna show up early.
We encourage it. If you get there right at six-thirty and we have quorum, like John said, the meeting may start. Um, because, you know, it's scheduled to start at six-thirty once we have quorum. So, you know, we, we're cognizant of people's time too. We, we want people to come out. We don't wanna keep people there all night, so we're gonna be, try to be punctual. The moderator will get things started.
And that was tricky last time because we had people complaining that we were holding the meeting. And then we had people on the other side, you know, complaining that, well, wait, we all wanna see what's happening. So it puts us in a tough spot.
Yeah, particularly where we're expecting a larger group.
Come early.
We, you know, come early, get checked in. And I also will say, we are gonna have an overflow room. Um, so if you are not, you know, of the first four to five hundred people, again, your vote will still be recorded, but you may end up in the overflow room where we'll have a deputy moderator, so on and so forth, if necessary. Um, but, yeah, show up early.
Five forty-five, six o'clock, good rule of thumb.
That's right. Um, I wanna, um, actually compliment, uh, Cody on his FAQs and the information and the webpage. Um, I mean, this is a very, um, this issue has become so politicized, uh, that it, 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 it's hard to talk to people unless you're on the same side. But, uh, I think what, what we have tried to do from the very beginning, and I think Cody has just been magnificent at, uh, trying to keep that even, is to, to lay out what the facts are, right? And you make any decision you want on whatever reason you want, that, that's, that's perfectly fine. But at least be, uh, at least what we're trying to do is make sure you have all the facts to make that decision. And he's done a marvelous job with that. The, the facts, I was very impressed with, the, the webpage, all that. It's just, again, he, he's neutral, he's not involved in this issue on the political end of it. That's more us and the town. But it is, again, I just think critical that we're transparent on these are, this is what you have to work with. It's, uh, how you make your decision is entirely a deal.
Yeah, and I, I think the board's done a great job getting as much information out as we can, you know?
Trying to.
Trying to flood the public with all the information and all the what-ifs and letting, letting the public make their decision.
Okay, good, very good. All right, any other updates?
Um, generally speaking, budgets are due on, uh, the thirteenth, December thirteenth. So we've got a few budgets in. Departments are doing a nice job with that. Um, the, we've asked the school department to also submit, uh, ten percent. They held a school committee meeting. They're, um, not thrilled with it, but, um, you know, again, I think in communications with the administrative team over there, Halifax Elementary is a department of the town. And, you know, what we request of one department, we're, we wanna be fair and equitable. So we recognize it may take them a little more time, but we are requesting that. Um, and then one other note, um, I think regarding the schools. Last week's, last week's school committee meeting, they presented data, um, I thought was quite telling. I don't know if you guys saw this, but it was, um, they take the per pupil spending of, of students.
Six floors.
Yeah, Halifax is, one thing I do wanna note though is that does include special ed. So it's in-building spending. So we have a very high number of special education students. So we're, we're paying a lot of money. So it's not that we're not investing in our education by that metric. It's that unfortunately, a lot of our funding is going to special ed. So when you look at the, um, regular day in-building operations, Halifax falls into the, um, sixth lowest per pupil expenditure in the state of Massachusetts. Of those six, two of them are virtual schools. So of physical in-person schools, we're in the bottom four, um, in the state for, again, not overall education spending, just Halifax Elementary.
In-building.
In-building. So not any of the special ed that we send out, which is significant. Um, but I, I think it's a good, important metric for the community to, to, to see because, um, you know, you've heard me say it's gonna be a very tough, uh, financial year. I think if you look at the operation, whether it's on the town side or the school side, there's not a, a ton to cut. Things are already very slim. Um, and we're already, I think, doing, that's a good, good, uh, metric to show, the schools are already doing a, a nice job of, with not a lot for the, for the regular day student. Um, again, no, it's not a lack of overall investment in education. We're investing a lot, you know? Over fifty-five percent of our budget goes into education, but we're in a case where we have a lot of special education students in Halifax. And unfortunately, a lot of those funds that may go to in-building operations are having to be rerouted to special education because we, we have an obligation, we, we have to meet that. So, thought that was good. Um, I hope that we can get more data from the schools as we go through the budget process. But I, I met with the school department today and, and saw that and I thought it was good to share with the board as well.
Is, I know, I know our population and our pool of students changes every year, but is there a way to, to forecast special ed costs year to year?
Nope. You know what happens is, uh, somebody will show up, say they move into town, I think, like, there's a cutoff date. I think it's in March, maybe, uh, for the following school year. So if somebody moves into town before that cutoff date, whatever it is, and they have a severely handicapped child who is getting tuitioned into some private school somewhere, we pay it.
Yeah.
Even though they...
I just didn't know if maybe returning, like returning students, you know, we might be able to... Well, we have an idea with that, but, but you have students who, um, throughout the year have added IEPs, have adjustments to their IEPs.
Yeah.
Or there's different situations where, you know, a student, um, who we could handle at one point internally, we had the resources, maybe we can no longer rehandle that. And now they have to go to a, a, an outside facility. That could cost sixty thousand dollars for a student. If it's, yeah, if it's someone...
Not only, not only do we have to pay the tuition, we have to pay the transportation.
Right.
So now you're hiring a private, a handicapped fan to take one student. Sometimes a long distance.
Sure.
They bring them for the day and then they come back and then by the end of the year, it's, I've seen a hundred thousand dollar bills on those.
Oh, yeah, easily. We, there's, um, some tuitions that could be as high as four or five hundred thousand dollars for a single student, you know, to a special education. And that may require them to, to live there, right, a residential case. Everyone's different, but the, that's, it's just astronomical.
True.
But I thought it was a really good metric to, for people to understand.
What's awful about it, and it's been this way as long as I've been involved, is that, yeah, this falls on the local taxpayer, the, the, the community taxpayer to pay these bills, which I, I don't, I don't have any objection to the, to the idea of special education. Two of my kids are involved in that. But, um, I, I don't, I think it's, 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 it's the type of thing that requires a broader, um, uh, a, 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 a broader control. And that control should be a state requirement, not a local requirement. Like, like, I get it, if you're, you know, if we have somebody who needs, say, uh, an hour a week on speech or a physical therapy or something, I mean, like, that's, that's a reasonable accommodation. You're talking about the stuff that Cody's talking about and, and I've seen it.
Yeah.
See it come in and it just, it's really not fair to the kids that are going to school, um, here. And the local taxpayers are paying that and they're glad to pay it. They wanna quality education and all that is good, but, you know, we're being penalized because of, of that, that type of thing. And I, I just don't think that's right. And again, another state legislative problem.
You're making, you're making no friends at the state house.
I don't want any friends in the state legislature. I wanted to do their job. That's it. That's all I care about. So hopefully, maybe they may get the message, I don't know. They haven't yet. They haven't yet.
I just, to your point, Cody, I hope that when the, the public sees that number, they understand what's going on behind it.
Yeah, we had the same thing, I think, with voc, voc ed, right? Don't we have, we have to tuition in some kids that we can't take over at the high school? We still paying it on a local level.
Um, yes, but, yes, voc, we pay the vocational transportation.
Transportation, yeah. It's just, so then again...
And then, Cody, just so that I understand, when a, when a student ages out of the elementary school and moves on to Silver Lake, does that bill still come to the town of Halifax or is that a Silver Lake bill?
I think it does.
It now goes to Silver Lake.
Okay.
It now goes to Silver Lake.
That's a change from last year?
Yes, and so that's where...
Because that's twenty-two years old.
Yes, so that's where it does go to Silver Lake now, but at, which is, well, there's, there's pros and cons, right? But the big hit this year is we get, so we get partially reimbursed from the state for special ed. Not a full amount.
Yeah.
But, and that's called the circuit breaker.
Yeah.
In Halifax, historically, we've gotten a lot of those funds because we have such a high volume of special education. Where, and it's a reimbursement base, so this year we get what was our cost last year. This year, we didn't have as high of a cost at Halifax Elementary because those were rerouted to Silver Lake. So we basically were able to supplement our budget this year with that money.